One last item you must assess is the condition of your irrigation system. Invest in any repairs or upgrades now to avoid a nightmare many experience and could cost even more. Following the playbook the Zelkies did will end with the reward of a refreshed space tailored to your needs and desires, adding shade and color and knowing you're staying water smart. Discover our list of approved water smart landscapers and/or plant lists at SNWA.com. Lake Mead remains about 30% full and is still under a Tier 1 federal water shortage declaration. This means mandatory cuts to our water supply. However, these are cuts that we can't handle because of your conservation. While Lake Mead is a shared resource between three states and Mexico, your diligent conservation, combined with the Southern Nevada Water Authority's infrastructure we showed you earlier in the show, does in fact ensure a reliable water supply in the midst of a lot of uncertainty. And while building a pipeline from the Mississippi River isn't feasible for a variety of reasons, SNWA will continue to find ways and do everything it can to keep as much water in Lake Mead as possible. Thanks for watching Vegas Valley H2O and thank you for staying water smart.
Keeping you connected for 25 years, you're watching City of Las Vegas TV.
The following program is close captioned for the hearing impaired.
Caught a vibe. Baby, are you coming for the ride? I just wanna look into your eyes. I just wanna stay for the night. When we take a drive, baby, we can hit the four oh five. Hypnotized by the lights, man, this must be the life.
When I go to sleep, I can't even fall asleep. Something's got a hold of me, feel it taking over me. But when I'm older, I'll be moving onward. I just got a drunk touch. Meet me at our spot. We got a vibe. Baby, are you coming for the ride? When I look into your eyes, I just wanna hold you all night. Maybe we can take a drive. Baby, we can hit the four oh five. Hypnotized by the lights, man, this must be the life.
Caught a vibe. Baby, are you coming for the ride? I just wanna look into your eyes. I just wanna stay for the night. When we take a drive, baby, we can hit the four oh five. Hypnotized by the lights, man, this must be the life.
Cause I'm in the stars tonight. So watch me bring the fire, set the night alight. Shoes on, get up in the mood, couple mil, let's rock and roll. King Kong, kick the drum, rolling on like a rolling stone. Sing song when I'm walking home, jump up to the top of the road. Ding dong, call me on my phone, iced tea and I get my ping pong. This day heavy, can't hit a baseball, I'm ready. Life is sweet as honey, yeah, this beach trade like money. Disco overload, I'm in today, I'm good to go, I'm diamond, you know I glow up. Let's go.
2025 meeting of the city council is called to order. This meeting has been properly noticed and posted in compliance with the open meeting law. These proceedings are being video recorded and can be viewed live on the City of Las Vegas TV on Cox Cable Channel 2. You could also watch the meeting live online and access other city content by visiting The proceedings will be rebroadcast on the City of Las Vegas TV the Wednesday of the meeting at 8:00 PM and also on Friday at 4:00 AM, Saturday at 7:00 PM, Sunday at 7:00 AM and the following Monday at 5:00 PM. This building is protected by a state-of-the-art fire detection and suppression sprinkler system. If alarms should activate during today's meeting, please evacuate using the exits at the back of the chambers out to the mezzanine. Proceed out the double doors to the terrace and down the back staircase. For anyone that has difficulty with stairs, please check with a marshal or fire official for assistance. Once outside, assemble on the northeast corner across the street from City Hall at Lewis and First Street. Employees wearing safety vests or are city marshals will inform you when it is safe to re-enter the building. For public comment related to the items on the agenda, citizen participation and public hearing items, we have available a speaker card which you can complete and submit to the city clerk. Cards are available in the clerk's office or at the rear of the chambers. If you do not submit a card, it does not prevent you from speaking under public comment, citizens' participation, or specified public hearing items. If there is anyone present today that has a need for a hearing impaired equipment, please see the city clerk's staff. If you parked in the parking garage across the street, a self-validation machine is located in the foyer between city council chambers and the security desk you walk through to enter these chambers. You must have your ticket with you to use the machine. If you do not have your ticket, see security personnel while exiting for a validation coupon. Before we proceed with the agenda, would everyone please rise for the invocation given by Rabbi Yitzhine Young Israel Ayesha of Las Vegas and please remain standing for the pledge. Welcome Rabbi.
Thank you. Thank you so much for inviting me back, although this time I return as a former City of Las Vegas Citizen of the Month.
Well deserved.
Thank you, thank you, thank you. Okay. So before we do the invocation, a quick joke and history lesson. You know, they say that every Jewish holiday can be summed up in the following three sentences. They tried to kill us, we won, let's eat. And that's really, we have a holiday of poor him around the corner, right? And that's what it is. The holiday celebrates, it commemorates the second redemption of the Jewish people. The first redemption, that was the really famous one that takes place in the Book of Exodus. That's when the Jews were redeemed from slavery and from a one nation. God and Moses played a great tag team together and it was filled with miracles. Ten plagues splitting the sea was marvelous. This redemption is recorded in the Book of Esther, which is one of the 24 books of the Hebrew Bible. And it's from, it's actually, we were saved from a decree of genocide from the entire Persian Empire, which encompassed all of the not-so-civilized worlds at that time. And the heroes were Queen Esther and her uncle Rabbi Mordechai. And God's name is not mentioned anywhere in the book. Very strange for a Book of the Bible, God's name doesn't come into play here. And one of the messages that we pull from that is that in our day and age, which of course, that story took place 2,500 years ago, but since the Jews left Egypt, the Almighty works his magic, so to speak, through human beings. That God's will is brought about through our efforts. And in the story of Esther was primarily Esther. Now Esther, Queen Esther, she did not want to take responsibility even though she was in the position of influence. The mayor and I have spoken often of the Queen Esther moment, right? Some of us have had those moments. All of us will have a Queen Esther moment. And what that is all about is that Esther was the one person who could stand up to the king and save the Jewish people, and she did not want to do it. She knew that if she were to go beyond her comfort zone, she could be killed. And her rabbi, uncle Mordechai comes and says, you know what? Don't be foolish. The Almighty is always, he is the mover of the chess pieces. Everything is going to happen according to God's plan. It is your job to step forward and effectuate that plan. And don't think for a moment that if you shirk your responsibility, that you and you will be saved, but no, you and your father's house will be destroyed. And by the way, who knows? Maybe it is for this reason, this moment, that you attained the royal position, the position of influence. Now, we all know many people that have been in positions of influence and they simply don't do what they need to do. Maybe they don't do what they need to do because their egos get in the way. Maybe it's selfishness, maybe it's laziness, whatever the reason is, but not us. We are people of influence and we've got to stand firm with bravery, knowing the Almighty is moving the chess pieces. God is running the world. And we just have to do our best to bring goodness and godliness into the world, no matter what our perceived consequences may be. We've got a job to do, we've got to do it. That is, that describes our Queen Esther moment. So as we begin today's council meeting, let's start with a short prayer. May the Almighty bless all of us, that our ability to influence the world is increased and may he give us the strength, moral clarity, and bravery to fulfill our potential and more, to bring goodness into the world. And let us say amen.
Amen.
Thank you.
And would you please lead us in the pledge?
Please you. Even my mayor could do that.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands by the nation, our God, and individual, liberty, and justice. I should have known. Good morning, everybody. It's a pleasure to see everyone today. This is the ceremonial portion of our council agenda. And for our first item, Councilwoman Bruni is going to recognize our Citizen of the Month. Councilwoman, there you are.
Good morning. Good morning, everyone. When I ran for city council a couple of years ago, one of my goals was to create a community award where neighbors take care of each other. And so last year, I started a Ward 6 volunteer service crew. And the idea is that I would identify projects in our area that need a little TLC and invite neighbors to join us to clean up. Little did I know when I started this crew that somebody two miles from me was already doing the same thing without any title or resources. And that person is Robert Israda, the person that we are honoring today. Robert, if you'll come up. So I met Robert four months ago on Nextdoor. He posted that he lives in Grand Entrees Community and Grand Entrees doesn't have an HOA, they don't even have a neighborhood association. And the area is a little, was a little rundown and we're showing some slides in a second. And so he took to Nextdoor and said, hey, I want to organize this cleanup. Who wants to help? And so we responded. It was a great partnership. We got a big republic services dumpster. He organized the neighbors of Grand Entrees and I organized our volunteer service crew. And in late January, we spent five hours, about 10 of us, working on two neighbors' homes. They're both senior citizens and one of the homes is inhabited by a widow who's immobile. And so you'll see from some of these pictures, the before and after. Robert has been doing this, he only moved to Vegas in 2021 and hit the ground running and is really just because he cares about his community and has a big heart, he's been continuing the work that he started in California. He's from Los Angeles and worked a lot in Hawthorne and was organizing beach cleanups and neighborhood cleanups. And so giving back to his community is part of his DNA. And so I'm so pleased that you're part of Ward 6. Just so you know, he hasn't stopped with that cleanup. He then repaired the wall and somehow he managed to get, he manages with every project to get professional folks, landscapers, masons to come out and help us. I'm beginning to think he's got ties to the mob to get all these people to come out and donate their time at no cost. And every week he texts me, letting me know that there's another area in our neighborhood that needs some TLC. So I think, Mike, we need to put them on our code enforcement team. Anyway, thank you so much, Robert. And would you like to say a few words?
I'd just like to say thank you to the mayor and council and especially Ms. Bruni. She's been so helpful. I mean, she actually gets in there and gets her hands dirty and you know, just anytime I get ahold of her, she's always available. So I really appreciate it.
So a couple of things for the honor of being Citizen of the Month, your picture will be displayed in front of City Hall for the next month. So you guys can come down and go to the arts district and have a night, what? Oh yeah. Have a nice meal and see your picture. And we also have this plaque for you. And there is a proclamation, which I want to read. Whereas Robert Israda, along with his beloved wife, Margot Israda, relocated to Las Vegas from Beverly Hills, California in 2021. At the start of this new chapter in his life, he committed himself to continuing to make a lasting impact through community service and generosity of time, talent, and treasure. And whereas Robert Israda has dedicated his life to serving others through community service, which has included efforts to organize neighborhood and beach cleanups in California. And whereas Robert Israda has been an active volunteer coordinating blood drives for the American Red Cross, serving as a team lead for the United Way and volunteering as a T-ball coach at his local YMCA for 13 years. And whereas when Robert arrived in Las Vegas, he continued his passion for community service in his Grand Entrees neighborhood, where he has played an instrumental role in leading and supporting neighborhood cleanups, organizing tree trimming events for the common areas, repairing the exterior retaining walls, and now organizing the formation of a neighborhood association. And whereas Robert Israda's unwavering selflessness and commitment to creating a kinder and more connected community have remained steadfast despite difficult milestones. A cancer survivor, Robert's resilience serves as an inspiration to many. And he continues to embody perseverance and gratitude in all aspects of his life. And whereas Robert, whereas above all, Robert is a devoted family man who has instilled values of service in his children. His legacy continues through his two sons, now college professors, and his daughter, a corrections officer, all of whom proudly serve their communities. And now therefore, we, the mayor and the members of the Las Vegas City Council, do hereby proclaim March 5th, 2025 as Robert Israda Day. Margot, will you come up for a picture?
And you have a cake. And I can eat it too? Yes. So you guys get in the center.
Congratulations.
We'll go in, three, two, and one. Let me give a couple more. We'll go in, three, two, and one. One, one, two, two. Thank you guys so much.
Thank you so much for being here.
Congratulations.
Thank you, appreciate it.
Thank you very much.
Good to see you.
I have the bag.
For today's final ceremonial item, Mayor Protem Knutson is going to recognize a community partner in the Las Vegas Medical District. Mayor Protem?
Thank you very much, mayor. And I'm really excited to be up here today to talk about UMC. In a couple of minutes, I'll invite you all to come up, like we talked about, the way I told you to do it. But I wanted to just spend a couple of minutes talking about why UMC is so important to me and for this council and for the city. Healthcare is one of our priorities, one of three priorities. And I, looking back on how it became a priority, I have to think back to how I ended up becoming a partner with UMC and it was my son. My son was very, very, very ill. And I think back to that day and there was a chance that I think he may not have been with us without for UMC. And so over the course of the last six years, I've spent about six weeks sleeping at UMC. I know the place very, very well. But there's a new thing that happened actually, and this is more recent. The last two months ago, my daughter was screaming on the way home from school, like absolutely screaming. And she was pulling on her ear, she had a red ear. And so I called all my doctor friends and I was like, she's screaming and I'm going on a trip tomorrow. And it's my second child and I know it's not terrible, she just has an earache. What do I do? And it turns out, UMC has this telehealth program and it took me eight minutes to get on to see a doctor, confirm that what I suggested was an earache. And 15 minutes later, I was at CVS picking up a prescription for an earache. I've since done that for my son who had the flu, picked up a prescription 25 minutes later. So this is all because of UMC being completely innovative, thinking through what are the medical needs of our community and how can we address them to the best of our abilities. So when I think back to my time sleeping at UMC, living at UMC for weeks and weeks, wondering if my son was going to live or die, I think about the environment that I was in at UMC. And then I think through the leadership of Mason and the board of directors with Mr. O'Reilly and the team at UMC and how they have completely renovated UMC, putting $60 million into making UMC a premier medical destination for anybody who has to live there or stay there. And it does absolutely matter to the patients, what environment they're walking into. So I am incredibly grateful. I also have to say that UMC got the Good Government Cashman Award from the Nevada Taxpayers Association. They chose today to tell me that because they beat out the city team. So that is what true partnership looks like, is to blow, or to tell your partners that you won and they didn't. So with that, I'm going to invite the UMC team up. It's not just UMC, it's a variety of partners who helped make the renovation project possible. And one more thing. So for all the people that have been complaining to me about Charleston construction and everybody's complained to me at one point or another over the last three years, I politely refer them to UMC because it's UMC's construction at this point. So amazing construction project. Why don't you guys come on up and tell us a little bit more about it? Mr. Chairman, I believe you're going to be given some kind words about UMC and how impactful this project is to the medical district.
Just like I told you, right on.
Thank you very much, Mayor Protem. Mayor, councilwomen, thank you very much for allowing us to be here today. As I flashback on the years I've spent before the city council, through the years when probably most of you weren't born yet, starting in November of 1969. There are exceptions to every rule, but I look at where we are today and I think it's thrilling to me that the best is yet to come. And through those years, I've had the privilege of working with a lot of you. I've worked in various capacities throughout the city and throughout the state. But I can tell you with absolute certainty that all the various experiences I've had with people throughout this city, this state, this county, this country, I believe that the experience that I've had over the last 11 years at UMC has been the most fulfilling and the best for a whole lot of reasons. Brian, you've addressed them in terms of the number of people I've seen that have been helped and have had urgencies. And you look at what we've done with the $65 million project, it's just the beginning. You know, it's the beginning of the next step because I think an awful lot of people in the community have really not fully appreciated what as I refer to as the Pretty Woman of UMC has to offer. And I think what you're seeing is the analogy I made earlier in the conversation. It's like the Pretty Woman. If anybody saw that movie, look at the before and look at the after. And we're getting to see the after. But I think the reason it's going to be so great is that, like Las Vegas, has made a difference in the world of entertainment by taking a, what a lot of people thought years ago was a bad habit called gambling, and have truly changed the world of entertainment around the world. I believe that we can and will do the same in healthcare. Can't change the whole thing, but if we have the continued cooperation that is just unique between the city, the county, the VA, the air force, it's so unique. As when I started into this process, a good friend of mine was the chairman of the Texas Medical Center, he was the CEO of the Texas Medical Center. I said, before I get involved, let me know if there's some hope. Because we were losing 100 and something million dollars a year. And I'm going, is abandon it or fix it? He said, one, you can't afford to abandon it because you just can't afford to do it. Two, it's fixable. Why is that? He said, do you know what kind of bones this lady has? It's really good. Went through all of this stuff from the burn unit to the lab, it was world-class and on and on. But there's probably some slides running, those, we're not going to go through the slides. Just in concluding, I think the team that is here is the UMC team. Raise your hand, UMC team members. They are at the helm daily. Grand Canyon, who has coordinated our construction, all the Grand Canyon people, raise your hands if you would. And they followed the plans of Brad Friedman, or is the architect standing here? Everybody knows Brad, I think. And those that really were on the ground that put it all together, Martin Harris. So where's Martin Harris? Raise your hands. Thank you. So those are the team that have made it possible. But just one more comment, that is that the Las Vegas Medical District is what's going to make the future of healthcare in our community possible. If you think about healthcare in a community as sort of a hub and spokes, this is our hub. I sit on the UCLA's healthcare group, I've watched it grow through the years, spent time at Texas Medical Center and others. If we don't have a hub, our wheel isn't going to roll very well. So all of us need to put our arms together, put our hands together, and everything else we've got to make our hub truly world-class. If we do that, the spokes that come out of the hub are going to make the wheel roll as we finish it up. And I think as one of my friends, a doctor who's been around here for many years, I talked to yesterday, he said, John, he said, and we were talking about children's care, he said, you know, we've got all the pieces in this community. He said, the analogy I've used through the years, it's like a dustpan. We sweep all the dust into the pan, he said, and together we look at it, well, he said, in this case in healthcare, they're here, we just need to figure out a time together through the medical hub, through UMC. So thank you very much for your support, each and every one of you. I'm most appreciative of all of your support and I think truly believe the best is yet to come for us, for our children, our grandchildren, our parents, and everybody else that's a part of this community. So thank you very much. Mason, you want to add something?
They got the Cashman Good Government Award.
Sorry about that.
No proclamation for you.
Get up in front, take your picture. You're gonna have to go.
Yes, we sure do.
Excuse me, guys.
No, 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 you stand up front.
I'm just going to go.
All right, I wonder where you are.
I'm going to try and get that past you.
There we go.
Good?
Um, Miss Hahn, can I get you a squishy?
Yeah, okay. And you, sir, I cannot see you, you can move this way just a little bit. There you go, see everyone? Wonderful. We will go in, three, two, and one. I'm going to take a few. We'll go in, three, two, and one. One more. In, three, two, and one. Great, thank you so much, everyone.
Hello.
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 throughout this city, this state, this county, this country, I believe that the experience that I've had over the last 11 years at UMC has been the most fulfilling and the best for a whole lot of reasons. Brian, you've addressed them in terms of the number of people I've seen that have been helped and have had urgencies. And you look at what we've done with the $65 million project, it's just the beginning. You know, it's the beginning of the next step because I think an awful lot of people in the community have really not fully appreciated what as I refer to as the Pretty Woman of UMC has to offer. And I think what you're seeing is the analogy I made earlier in the conversation. It's like the Pretty Woman. If anybody saw that movie, look at the before and look at the after. And we're getting to see the after. But I think the reason it's going to be so great is that, like Las Vegas, has made a difference in the world of entertainment by taking a, what a lot of people thought years ago was a bad habit, called gambling, and have truly changed the world of entertainment around the world. I believe that we can and will do the same in healthcare. Can't change the whole thing, but if we have the continued cooperation that is just unique between the city, the county, the VA, the Air Force, it's so unique. As when I started into this process, a good friend of mine was the chairman of the Texas Medical Center. He was the CEO of the Texas Medical Center. I said, "Before I get involved, let me know if there's some hope." Because we were losing 100 and something million dollars a year. And I'm going, "Abandon it or fix it?" He said, "One, you can't afford to abandon it because you just can't afford to do it. Two, it's fixable. Why is that?" He said, "Do you know what kind of bones this lady has? It's really good. Went through all of this stuff, from the burn unit to the lab, it was world-class, and on and on. But there's probably some slides running. Those, we're not going to go through the slides." Just in concluding, I think the team that is here is the UMC team. Raise your hand, UMC team members. They are at the helm daily. Grand Canyon, who has coordinated our construction, all the Grand Canyon people, raise your hands if you would. And they followed the plans of Brad Friedman, or is there an architect standing here? Everybody knows Brad, I think. And those that really were on the ground that put it all together, Martin Harris. So, where's Martin Harris? Raise your hands. Thank you. So, those are the team that have made it possible. And, but just one more comment. That is that the Las Vegas Medical District is what's going to make the future of healthcare in our community possible. If you think about healthcare in a community as sort of a hub and spokes, this is our hub. I sit on the UCLA's healthcare group. I've watched it grow through the years, spent time at Texas Medical Center and others. If we don't have a hub, our wheel isn't going to roll very well. So, all of us need to put our arms together, put our hands together, and everything else we've got to make our hub truly world-class. If we do that, the spokes that come out of the hub are going to make the wheel roll as we finish it up. And I think as one of my friend's doctor, who's been around here for many years, I talked to yesterday, he said, "John," he said, and we were talking about children's care. He said, "You know, we've got all the pieces in this community." He said, "The analogy I've used through the years is like a dustpan. We sweep all the dust into the pan," he said, "and together we look at it." Well, he said, "In this case, in healthcare, they're here. We just need to figure out how to tie them together through the medical hub, through UMC." So, thank you very much for your support, each and every one of you. I'm most appreciative of all of your support. And I think truly believe the best is yet to come for us, for our children, our grandchildren, our parents, and everybody else that's a part of this community. So, thank you very much. Mason, you want to add something?
No proclamation for you.
I'm busy right now. It's okay. Okay. Okay, what am I doing? Okay. I just leave this here, all right?
We're not done. They've got...
Do you have something else? April 24th, Eilia.
Yeah, oh, I love it.
6:30.
Yeah, I love it.
Okay, what are we doing?
Hi, I'm John O'Reilly.
Oh, cool. Oh, you're welcome. A pleasure.
...may be limited. All comments made will be cross-reference to those specific items. If anyone submitted a speaker card or who wishes to speak under this portion of the agenda, please come to the podium and state your name for the record. This is your opportunity to address the council, but the council is not able to respond or engage in dialogue. We will set the time at two minutes. Are there any people here that wish to address the City Council? Good morning, and please state your name for the record.
Good morning, Mayor and Council for the Record, Gina Grayson, Nevada Voters for Animals. I'm actually very happy to be here today. My heart is so happy. I'm here for Agenda Item Number 35. This is something that probably 10 years ago I discussed with former Deputy Chief Tim Shattler. This is something that we have been working on with our Animal Welfare Task Force meetings and our Animal Town Halls that Councilwoman Seaman has been having. Thank you so much. And Chief Potts, you know, an idea is only an idea until someone gives it wings. So, Rudy, Chief Potts, Councilwoman, I'm not sure who else worked on it. I'm eager to hear the presentation, but I am so excited. And congratulations to the schoolchildren who were involved. This has been an idea that I'm just, I'm so happy that it's happened. So, thank you so much.
You're very welcome. Thank you. Good morning.
Good morning. Hello, dear Mayor Shelley and you great City Council. My name is Eric Melchizedek Christ Nimrod. You can find Christ and John, the 14th chapter, the 20th verse, and elsewhere in the Bible, of course. This is concerning Agenda 15. I'm in total agreement with the possible action to approve the ratification of the Older Adults Home Modification Program of $1,479,092.26 to the City of Las Vegas by the United States Department of Housing. Note, in Genesis, the fifth chapter, the 27th verse, Methuselah, our ancestor lived to be 969 years young. To me, middle age is 569 years. Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much. Is there anybody that wishes to address the City Council? In that case, we will move on to Agenda Item Number Eight. For possible action, any items from the 9:30 a.m. session that the council staff and/or the applicant wish to be stricken, tabled, withdrawn, or held in abeyance to a future meeting may be brought forward and acted upon at this time. Mayor Protem?
Madam Mayor, I have one item. It's 33A through 33B, 25-0033 EOT 1 and EOT 2. Applicant owner is Buenos Aires Air Conditioning and Heating Incorporated on .61 acres at 5200 Vegas Drive. There's an abeyance request by Councilwoman Summers Armstrong until the April 2nd, 2025 City Council Meeting, and that'll be my motion.
Shall we vote on the motion? I'm going to vote aye verbally, as my machine doesn't seem to be working. Okay, please. Please post.
Aye.
Aye? How about we do this in a more organized manner? All those in favor?
I think we got it.
We got it? Okay, perfect. In that case, the motion passes. For possible action to approve the final minutes by reference of the February 5th, 2025 City Council Meeting, Mayor Protem, may I have a motion to approve the minutes?
Move to approve.
Shall we vote on the motion? City Clerk, I'm an aye. Please. Please post. Motion carries. Items Number 10 through 25 are on the consent agenda, are considered to be routine, are recommended for approval by the departments, and may be enacted in one motion. Are there any items the council wishes to bring forward? In that case, Mayor Protem, may I have a motion for the consent agenda for Items 10 through 25?
Move to approve.
Shall we vote on the motion? I'm an aye. Oh, it's been hiding. Okay. Please post. Motion carries. Agenda Item Number 26. Report by Mike Jensen, City Manager, in discussion for possible action regarding a two-year collective bargaining agreement between the City of Las Vegas and International Association of Firefighters, Local 1285, $15,251 and $860. Various funds, all wards are impacted. Mr. Jensen or Mr. Zamora, would you care to enlighten us?
Good morning, Mayor Berkeley, Member City Council, Mike Jensen, City Manager. And as you noted, with me today is our HR Director, Vince Zamora, and our Senior Assistant City Attorney, Morgan Davis. And we're here today, really, today is the culmination of many, many months of negotiations. And sometimes, as you can imagine, very spirited conversations to bring forward to you today a two-year contract with the International Association of Firefighters. Vince has a short presentation to walk you through. Before that, I want to take a moment to thank the teams on both sides for all of their hard work in bringing this item before you today. And then, I do have a required NRS statement to make. After that, I'll turn it over to Vince, and then we'll answer any questions you might have. So, what I would like to do again is just take a moment, certainly to thank these two gentlemen to my right, Morgan and Vince, and their teams, the teams from the City Attorney's Office, the teams from the HR department. Huge amount of work to bring this forward. Also, I want to thank our Deputy City Manager, Tim Hacker, who oversees our fire department and has had a lot of information to help bring these negotiations to where they got to. Of course, our Fire Chief Fernando Gray and his entire fire admin team. And then, also on the IAF side, the firefighter side, Ruben Sanchez and James Suarez. Again, these are conversations that get spirited. But at the end of the day, both of our sides can say we had a very professional period of time to make it to this moment today. So, without further ado, let me put in the NRS requirement. And that is, in accordance with NRS 288153, as City Manager, I am required to report out on the estimated fiscal impact of the new two-year agreement with Local 1285. The new agreement will be in effect from July 1, 2024, through June 30, 2026. The estimated fiscal impact of the agreement is $15,251,860. And with that, I'm going to have Vince walk you through a little bit more of the details. Thank you.
Thank you, Mike. Good morning, Mayor Council for the Record, Vince Zamora, Human Resources Director. As Mike said, I have a very short presentation for you. I want to do a background of how we got to this point. You'll see here on this slide that the IFF Local 1285 non-supervisory and supervisory contracts cover approximately 711 employees in the fire department. Our negotiations started in January of 2024. We had a total of nine meetings through April of 2024. At that point, impasse was declared. We had a fact-finding hearings that held on August 6th and 7th of this, of last year, and a Fact Finder report received on January 10th of this year. A tentative agreement was reached on February 11, 2025, and IFF membership voted to approve the two-year agreement for the July 1, 2024 through June 30, 2026 period. The changes with fiscal impacts include Article 17 wages, effective July 1, 2024, which would be retroed back to all of the members. They will receive a 3.25% COLA, a 1.35% salary increase, and we will eliminate the entry step of that particular group. And effective July 1, 2025, a 2.6% COLA plus a 0.7% salary increase for individuals in the FC and FRB salary grades. And those includes individuals that are in fire communications, fire prevention, and fire equipment mechanics, and a 1.6% salary increase for those in FC and FCB. And those include our fire suppression, firefighters, paramedics, and captains. Also included would be Article 22, which has medical benefits. We have an increase of the employer contribution to the fire trust from $500 to $515 per pay period. Article 23, uniforms tool allowances. We increase the tool allowance for fire equipment mechanics, classification from $360 to $1,500. This has not been looked at in quite a bit of time. That's why we have such a big increase and is consistent with other individuals that receive tool allowances from our various other collective bargaining groups. Increased tool allowance for fire communications technicians and fire equipment service technicians from $360 to $750 per year, and the same logic applied here. So, the estimated fiscal impact, as Mike mentioned, you can see the wages would be $14,661,000. Medical benefits, $574,000. And the tool allowance, $16,860. All totaling the $15,251,860. Of course, as Mike mentioned, we could not have gone through this without the, all the groups being involved. And we'd particularly like to recognize Local 1285 leadership, James Suarez, Tyler Charcel, John Crum, Michael Levine, Beau McDougall, and Cynthia Rebelis. James had sent me a text that he was on the way down, and I... Thank you very much, James. And of course, our team, Morgan Davis, Nicole Garcia from the City Attorney's Office, Sue Brown, Rick Hunt. Were very, very instrumental in getting this across the line. I'm open for any questions or comments you may have.
Are there any questions and comments from the council members? In that case, congratulations to everybody on both sides for the honest and hard negotiations. We appreciate you very much. And may I have a motion, Mayor Protem?
Madam Mayor, with great appreciation to the Fire and Rescue Department, it still remains the city's first priority, public safety, along with our DPS team and our Fire and Safety team. And then, again, to the city's team for negotiation. That's a lot of words. I was going to say, motion to approve.
Shall we vote on the motion? Please post. Motion is carried. Congratulations to everybody. Agenda Item 27. Resolutions R-16-2025. Public hearing and discussion for possible action to approve and adopt a resolution authorizing a temporary inter-fund loan to be paid within 12 months from the City of Las Vegas Sanitation Enterprise Fund to the City of Las Vegas Liability Insurance and Property Damage Fund, up to a maximum amount of $36 million. Loan will be evidenced by an unsecured promissory note and will be used for the acquisition of certain real estate located near the intersection of Charleston Boulevard and Walupai Way in the City of Las Vegas, related to an agreement dated December 24, 2024, between the City of Las Vegas' buyer and 180 Land Company LLC, Four Stars LTD, and 70 Acres LLC, collectively a seller, not to exceed $136 million, Sanitation Enterprise Fund, all wards. This is a public hearing, which I now declare open. Welcome.
Good morning, Madam Mayor. Good morning, City Council. Susan Helsley, Chief Financial Officer, for the record. I just have a few points that I want to go over so everyone understands kind of the meaning and what this particular item will do for the city. So, if you, we actually have authority granted to us between NAC 354.290 and NRS 354-6118. It allows us to have an inter-fund loan between the sewer fund and the Liability Insurance and Property Damage Fund. This evolved from the requirement of the December 18, 2024, Agenda Item 34, which was the acquisition of the property near Charleston and Walupai Way. That agreement was signed on December 24, 2024. So, the debut for Christmas. This allows us to have the cash flow for the city to meet those, the terms of that agreement. Think of it as a bridge loan. Sometimes, when we are buying a new house, we need a loan to bridge between when we sell our property and when we buy the new property. So, this is essentially a bridge loan. It's, the maximum amount is for $136 million. We expect to pay back $100 million of that on or after, close to around July 1, after the first of the fiscal year. The other $36 million, if we need it, which we don't believe we will, we would use to, once we sell Cashman, that money would be used to pay off the loan. We're not expecting to draw on the entire $136 million. It's just in case something happens to the Cashman sale. We will be paying the sanitation fund interest in the same amount as it will be earning over that period. So, if it's going to be earning between 4% and 5%, we would pay back 4% and 5%. We will be paying this back from the general fund reserves. So, what will happen is, general fund will make the transfer into the liability fund and then pay back the sewer fund. So, everything will be paid back. I know we've had some questions. Well, how will this affect sewer rates? It will not. The sewer rates are set by MUNICODE 14.04030. It's based on a five-year CPI index. And then, back in 2022, we added 4% for the next 10 years to cover capital improvements. So, the last adjustment that we made for calendar year 2025 was 8.2%. The five-year average for CPI was 4.2. Plus, that 4% came up to the 8.2. So, again, it will have no effect on the sewer rates.
Thank you so much.
You're welcome.
Are there, is there anyone else wishing to be heard on this item? Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing. Are there any questions or comments from the council members? Seeing none, may I have a motion, Mayor Protem?
Thank you, Mayor. I'm going to move to approve Item Number 27.
All right. Shall we vote on the motion? Please post. Please post.
I don't have circles.
Oh. All right. Motion passes. Thank you so much. Agenda item 28, Boards and Commissions. Discussion for Possible Action Regarding the Reappointment of Sandra Cosgrove to the Historic Preservation Commission. Ms. Cosgrove serves as the Category 6 member experienced in Nevada history and was originally appointed in 2014. She is eligible to be reappointed, has been, has the recommendation of the Community Development Department, and she wishes to continue serving. Is there a motion, Councilwoman Bruny?
I will make a motion to reappoint Dr. Sandra Cosgrove to the Historic Preservation Commission.
And I know how hardworking she is. This is a very good choice. Shall we vote on the motion? Please post. Motion carries. Agenda item 29, Discussion for Possible Action Regarding the Appointment of Nominee David Tilzer to the Senior Citizens Advisory Board as the Mayor's Appointee. A vacancy exists on the board due to the, to the term expiration of the mayor's previous representative. Mr. Tilzer is eligible and wishes to be appointed and is in the council chambers today. May I have, oh, I move to approve the appointment. Please post. Motion carries. And Dave, would you stand up so we could acknowledge you? Thank you so much for coming to our meeting. Agenda item 30, New Bills. Item 30, Bill 2025-1 will be heard at the Recommending Committee meeting on Monday, March 17, 2025. City Attorney, would you please read the new bill?
Yes, ma'am. Bill number 2025-1, an ordinance to amend LVMC Title II by adding a new chapter therein, designated as Chapter 2.70 to establish the Youth Leadership Advisory Council and provide for other related matters.
Thank you so much. New Bill 2025-1 is assigned to the March 17, 2025 Recommending Committee, members Councilman Knutson and Councilwoman Seaman and Polinski. If any so designated are unable to attend, the Clerk's Office will coordinate, will coordinate finding substitutes as necessary at my direction. Thank you so much. Agenda item 31. Item numbers 31 through 33B are on the consent agenda, but items 33A and 33B were held in abeyance. The remaining items are considered to be routine and are recommended for approval by the Department of Community Development. Mayor Pro Tem, may I have a motion to approve this consent agenda?
So moved.
All right. Shall we vote on the motion? Please post. Agenda item 34. 25-0017-EOT1, Fourteenth Extension of Time, Nonconforming Public Hearing. Applicant DTP Management LLC Owner, 899 Fremont LLC, for Possible Action on a Land Use Entitlement Project Request for a Nonconforming Liquor Establishment Tavern Use at 899 Fremont Street and 115 South 8th Street, T5-MST, 5 Main Street, Zone Ward 3, Ms. Diaz. This is, staff recommends denial. This is a public hearing. I now declare it open. Is the applicant present?
Yes, Your Honor. Good morning. Dara Goldsmith, along with my client, Richard Shea, on behalf of the estate of Tony Shea and the DTP entities. We have filed for this extension of time, and I believe our application this year is quite different than previously. We have been working hard. The property has been listed for over a year. We are happy to report that we received three LOIs. We have, with regard to those letters of intent, we negotiated with all of them. We entered into, we are in the third turn of a PSA on a, for a sale agreement. We are very excited about this potential buyer. It is a new buyer into the Nevada market. They are known for renovating properties and bringing them back to their glory days. So kind of in line with what you might see with the old post office, which is now the Mob Museum, we anticipate that that would be the type of use that they're looking to do. We are very happy that in the last year, we have received an extension of time on our unrestricted nonconforming gaming license from the Nevada Gaming Commission. That extension is good through May of 2026. Since we're on the third turn of the PSA with this organization, who operates 200 such properties throughout the United States in 20 different states, we're not in a position to disclose who that is. We have had communications and have been working with Councilwoman Diaz's office, along with her team, and have updated her on the status of this. It's not that we've been sitting idle. We have done over, there's been over nine tours. 98 NDAs had been signed by interested parties on this property. The wrinkle on this property is, as you may be aware, the formerly known as the F9, the Eli, beautiful apartment complex, multifamily dwellings here in downtown in the Fremont East District. The Western contains a parking easement for that. So we're in the process of trying to move that parking easement to another property. That is a little bit easier than done, so while we would love to be able to say that because we're turning this PSA that we're going to have a short due diligence period, we're not comfortable in saying that because we do have to go ahead and work with the Eli owners in moving that property, the parking, because presently it's on the Western's parking lot from when it, the back end on the south end of the Western. But we're very optimistic. We feel that the extension of time on this permit enables the buyer to utilize the tavern license, along with the unrestricted nonconforming gaming license on that entire parcel, which would enable it to have, in theory, it could have two, two different properties operating. Would have the Western on the Western property. With regard to this parcel, it would enable it to have liquor, and you may say, well, gee, we don't do tavern licenses anymore. But by having us have this tavern license, we're able to have more than 16 games associated with the liquor license. So that's why it's important for the purposes of development. The Western property is quite large. It comprises three parcels, running from the Eli to just, it runs from the Eli running west to 8th Street. So between 9th and 8th, the entire parcel backing Fremont, facing on Fremont. So we've had good communications. We believe that granting this extension of time, because it would be within, giving us the one-year extension, which I understand is the maximum that can be given at a time, would conform with the objective of the Fremont East Entertainment District, as well as would enable the buyer to not try to retrade price if you were to give us a shorter extension, which is a concern. So with that, I'm certain that Mr. Floyd will have some comments as well.
Mr. Floyd?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor Seth Floyd, for the record, Director of Community Development. Mayor, as the current alcohol on-premise full use does not include other tavern establishments as protected uses, the applicant could obtain a new special use permit for this use and no longer perpetuate a nonconforming use. Staff recommends denial of this 14th extension of time request that would perpetuate that nonconforming use. It should be noted that the nonrestricted gaming on the property, as Ms. Goldsmith mentioned, has been preserved, and that's a separate use and is not impacted by the liquor use. Thank you.
Thank you. This is a public hearing. Is there anyone wishing to be heard on this item? Seeing none, does the applicant, well, are there any conditions for the applicant to agree to?
So Mayor, there are, there are, there are no added conditions other than what's in your backup that I'm aware of.
Okay, thank you. Thank you. And have you reviewed those conditions, and would you be in agreement?
I believe that the conditions were a denial, so that the recommendation was the denial, and that would be not what we're in favor of. We're in favor of having it, having it approved, and I don't know if the conditions have changed since that time.
Apparently not.
But I would state that, while I appreciate the comments by Mr. Floyd, that it does impact the ability on the parcel, especially the 8th Street parcel, to have more than 16 games, and it would enable it to be a more comprehensive entertainment property by leaving this use in process. Since we have, I do believe I disagree with Mr. Floyd's analysis that the nonrestricted, the nonrestricted, nonconforming license doesn't companion with the tavern, because it does. It enables the property to be more fully developed, because the Western's parcel, there's three parcels that are on the lot. There's the main Western parcel, which is the eastern half, and then the Western half is into, into two halves, so a quarter of each. So I do believe it does have an impact, and I believe that just coming back for a liquor license would be a difference in terms of what a developer could do with the property.
Thank you. Are there any questions or comments from the council? Is there a motion, Councilwoman Diaz?
Thank you, Madam Mayor, and thank you, Ms. Goldsmith, for coming into my office and explaining where we are. This extension of time has come before me many years. I've been lobbied heavily on retaining it, and I just, I'm going to take a leap of faith one, because I'm hearing that there's interest, and you're heavily involved currently in trying to get this into the hands of someone who can activate it and bring it back to life. And one thing that I, that caught my ear that I do like is that they want to keep the bones and that they don't want to demo this property. And I think as a council, we're very invested in preserving as much of our history as possible, and so I'm going to remain optimistic that the PSA will continue to successfully move along, but you'll all hustle to get this, because I do believe that at this juncture, we're going for a 14th. I'm taking this leap, but it's also a lot of manpower for my staff to constantly be paper trailing and noticing and all of the things that go with posting an agenda item and doing the extension of time. So I will be, I don't want to hamper the, because I'm sure that you already offered a package, and that's what your sale agreement is all around. I don't want to make them maybe get cold and say, oh, now this is gone. I don't want to move forward. But I do want you to have the understanding that I think this would probably the final EOT if, for some reason, the agreement falls by the wayside and we're not then moving forward with a new buyer quickly, then this is my last time I, because I think our liquor, I know they're going to lose slots, but that's what happens when you don't hustle to get the deal across the line, right? So hopefully, there's enough pressure for them now to say, we gotta buckle down and make this deal happen, or else we're not going to have the time to claim the tavern side of it, too. I hope that that's amenable to you.
Understood, and I am optimistic that we will, in the near future, be able to disclose the purchaser and have that deal done.
I look forward to learning who this new entity is. So, Mr. Floyd, what do you recommend the motion be then?
So if you are moving to approve this as is for one year, then that would be a motion to approve their 14th extension of time.
Okay, so I move to approve this EOT for one year's time.
All right. Shall we vote on the motion? Please post. The motion is carried.
Thank you so much.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Councilwoman Diaz, for your team's hard work, we really appreciate it.
Agenda item 35, Reports and Presentations. I think we're all excited to see this. Presentation in recognition of the City of Las Vegas students who submitted entries for the Ward 2 Spay and Neuter Awareness Campaign. It affects all wards. Dr. Malisch.
Thank you. Good morning, Madam Mayor, City Council. Dr. Tammy Malisch, Director of Youth Development and Social Initiatives, for the record, and I am joined by...
How do, Mayor? Deputy Director of Parks, Recreation, Cultural Affairs.
And Rudy Tovar, Department of Public Safety Manager overseeing Animal Protection Services.
Thank you. So this is a super exciting, I'm going to front-load some details so we can spend the rest of the time on the most important part, the youth and their incredible artwork. So the Spay and Neuter Campaign, you'll hear a little bit more about how we got here, but the outreach on this included flyers distributed at all the principal roundtables for Wards 1, 3, 4, and 6, flyers and emails to all of our CCSD charter and private schools within the city's jurisdiction, direct phone calls to schools, as well as outreach and flyers in our community centers, at our book festival, and other citywide events. The communications team also launched a social media awareness campaign, and Parks and Rec and Cultural Affairs Administration shared the materials to further distribute within their programs. Flyers were handed out at the book festival, as I mentioned, and we distributed them at every, far and wide at every event to get the submission. Thank you, heartfelt thank you to multiple city departments. This is the fabulous City of Las Vegas, where cross-departmental collaboration results in amazing things. In addition to the Department of Public Safety, Chief Potts, Manager Rudy Tovar, and Jacqueline Arshenbow, and Parks, Rec, and Cultural Affairs, Pat O'Mara, Pat Vaughn, who assisted us with the signs, and the Communications Department branded all of this, specifically Lori and Graphics and Zach. They did such an outstanding job branding this so that it looked darling. And with that, we're going to go ahead and do the quick presentation and get the kiddos up here. Rudy?
All right. So once again, Rudy Tovar, DPS Manager overseeing Animal Protection Services, for the record. Out of all the times that I've been up here, this is by far the happiest and most excited item that I have been a part of. I am so grateful to all of the artists that submitted. I want to thank all the children, our young youth here, and their parents for coming and spending this time with us. I'm going to go over a few quick, simple things. I'm going to talk about the campaign, how it was initiated, and some of the goals that we wanted to achieve with this campaign. And then, as Dr. Malich said, it was a collaboration, because there's no way that I could have pulled this off by myself. So thanks to the other departments at the city, we were able to get to an amazing point, which Dr. Malich will continue on, and Pat will also show you guys what they came up with, which I am beyond the moon excited. So without further ado, the Spay and Neuter Awareness Campaign was initiated by Ward 2 Councilwoman Victoria Seaman, in partnership with the Department of Public Safety and local advocates. So we had a meeting, and the campaign focused on public education and compliance with NRS 574-670, which requires park signage related to sterilization. So typically, for any animal-related items, you typically find them in NRS 474, and all the way at the very, very, very bottom is where we found this one here. So it was brought to our attention, and then we decided to, to figure out a way to address this issue in a manner that is essentially not so much coming down on folks. We wanted to make it fun, exciting, and something that we can place throughout the community, which basically any business, city park, it would just make sense. Everyone would pretty much be on board because it's so cool. So the Spay and Neuter Awareness Campaign goals included decreasing animal overpopulation, reducing the number of animals that end up in shelters, and educating the public about spay and neuter requirements in a friendly, invisible manner. And so that was very important for us, that we really wanted to go into a friendly, invisible manner. And when we met, everyone was on board with it, and I was so happy when I left that meeting because that's exactly the direction that I always liked to go into, and that's education first. So the campaign required the collaboration of the Department of Public Safety, which I'm a part of, the Department of Parks, Recreation, and Cultural Affairs, and the Department of Youth Development and Social Initiatives. And with that, I'm going to go ahead and pass it on.
Thank you again, Dr. Tammy Malisch. We opened the campaign to students aged 10 through 18. We received 71 submissions. The submissions were judged by the city departments represented, and we narrowed it down from 71 to 14, and then the Ward 2 office assisted with final awards and decisions. Each participant will receive a certificate for their submission, and the most exciting part is the winning artwork is going to be displayed in the dog park. part is the winning artwork is going to be displayed in the dog parks. Pat's going to tell you a little bit more about that. And the posters of those winners and honorable mentions will be displayed at all of our City of Las Vegas rec centers, senior centers, pools, sports complexes. And just before we came in here, we greeted the parents and youth with a little breakfast and meet and greets, and made up little, cute little pet-themed goodie bags for them. And we love the posters so much that all of our offices are also going to have these posters in them, because they turned out so great.
So I'll show you the three winners, sorry, Padre Mayor, Deputy Director of Parks Recreation and Cultural Affairs. The three winners that were decided upon through this process, each of them will have a sign in four of our defined off-leash dog parks within the city. And so our "Take a Pause for the Cause" sign will go at Doug Selby Children's Memorial Park in Basin, an All-American. That's Kinsey Warren. We have "Spay and Neuter, Protect Them" with Madeline Caruso. That will go to the Justice Meyer and Levitt J.C. Community Park, Police Memorial Park, Calogseer Sports Park, and Rancho, and the Rancho Oke Dog Park, when it opens in about eight-ish months. Timeline's still to be determined, but when that opens, that sign will go over there as well. And then the "Avoid a Litter, Spay Your Critter" from Berkeley, Berkeley, what's your, how do you say your last name? Garate, okay. I wanted to make sure I had that right. Berkeley Garate was the artist on that one that will go to Freedom, Dexter, Wofter, and Centennial Hills Park.
Okay, thank you. Dr. Malisch, would it be possible to introduce all of the students?
So one of our finalists is Kinsey Warren. Kinsey?
My name's Kinsey. I'm 13 years old, and I go to Doral Academy of Fire Mesa.
This is for you, Kinsey. We have a certificate, and we have your, we'll be giving you a plaque for all your hard work.
The youth will get to take these signs home, and then we have others that are going in the parks, so they'll get one for their bedrooms as well.
Thank you.
Our next recipient is Berkeley Garrett.
I'm Berkeley, and I'm 10, and I go to Los.
And our final student with a dog park sign is Madeline Caruso.
I'm Madeline Caruso. I'm 12, and I go to Cadwallader.
And so now our honorable mentions, we'll have those youth step forward. We're going to start with Catalaia Astorga. Peyton Holbert.
I just want to say, let's give them another round of applause. These are the artists of our future. And I also want to say, it was a mighty idea, I mean, it was a small idea that had a mighty outcome. So thank all of you for working with us, and I want to thank the animal advocates, because they were a big part of this, and we will continue to meet and come up with ideas. So thank you.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, City Council.
Our pleasure. And may I ask all of the parents of the students to please stand so we could acknowledge
The kids appreciate, Mayor, that you didn't pull this item forward, and they got to experience a city council meeting and miss a little bit more of their school day.
Can we get Rudy and Chief Potts and everybody who was involved? Gina, would you like to be in the picture?
Tammy, you're here. All right, we're going to go in three, two, and one. Hold for one more. We'll go in three, two, and one.
Are there any questions or comments from members of the city council?
Madam Mayor, I just want to commend all the youth that participated in this call to action, and it's always going to be awesome to go to our different dog parks throughout the city and see their artwork rendered. So I just want to say, keep on the advocacy, because we all need it at all levels, starting from elementary through high school.
Fantastic. I think this was a lovely project, and I'm very excited for everybody that participated and for those that placed and got honorable mentions. How lovely for all of us. Thank you for tackling an issue that is very important to the city council. This was a presentation only, so no action is required, and we will now move on to item Set date on any appeals filed or required public hearings. I would instruct the city clerk to set the public hearing dates and appeals from the city planning commission meetings in dangerous buildings or nuisance litter abatements. Will do, thank you. Thank you very much. Agenda item 37. Citizen participation, public comment during this portion of the agenda. Comment must be limited to matters within the jurisdiction of the city council. No subject may be acted upon by the city council unless that subject is on the agenda and is scheduled for action. If you wish to be heard, please come to the podium and give your name for the record, the amount of discussion on any single subject, as well as the amount of time any single speaker is allowed may be limited. This is your opportunity to address the council, but the council is not able to respond or engage in dialogue. Are there any members of the public who wish to speak under this portion of the agenda? Would you please state your name for the record?
My name is Eric Melchizedek Christ Nimmar. You can find Nimmar in Genesis, the 10th chapter, the 6th to the 10th verse. Hello again, dear Mayor Shelley and you great city council. On January the 17th, on January the 17th, 2025, in the Courtyard Homeless compound, I went to the doctor's office. I was instructed by Allied University Security Personnel to leave my backpack outside in the designated area. I came out approximately three minutes later, and my backpack had been stolen. In it was my precious cellphone, my precious computer, prescriptions, and other very, very important papers. I want Allied University Security Service to reimburse me $5,000 for not securing my property, my precious property. That's it, and that's cheap. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Is there anybody else that wishes to comment? Please. Would you mind stating your name for the record?
Tanita Franklin. I came here today, and I don't want to be the bearer of bad news, but I purchased a home in the, on Griffith, well, in Las Vegas, in a nice ranch home, and I was appalled because I went to Lowe's to do home improvement, and I seen women soliciting their bodies. It was an awful sight. It was a pregnant woman and one woman with lingerie, and I was so appalled by it, and I asked Lowe's, is this normal? And they said it was worse. So I came here today just to voice my concern, because not only did I buy a house in that neighborhood, but when I seen Metro, they, when they, when I seen Metro, and they was policing the area one day, they said that it's near Oke and like Fremont or whatever area. It's a bus stop in that area, and I'm just very concerned as a citizen and a homeowner, a new homeowner, about that situation. And they wanted me to take pictures, I called, but I don't feel comfortable. You know, I drive a big truck, and I don't feel comfortable. I don't want people to come after me trying to take pictures when they can just get a camera and put it in that area, but I don't feel safe for myself, for safety of myself and my family. So that's why I'm here today, to voice my concerns, because to my knowledge, it's illegal in Clark County.
Thank you so much.
Good morning again. For the record, Gina Greyston, Nevada Voters for Animals. Just wanted to add that that was my first law that I authored back in 2009, was the one that requires the posting of the sterilization. So this has been a very long time coming to, you know, to have that. I'm so happy and proud, and thank you to everybody who worked on that Spay and Neuter project. But speaking of spay and neuter, I want to read into the record this post from Keith Williams, who is with C5 Community Cat Coalition of Clark County. He posted this three days ago. I've been following the lead lost and found admissions of cats and kittens for some time. I only include those with addresses as I plot them on my map. January and February of this year are more than twice as high than any year since 2020, when I started. Hang on, it's going to be a wild ride this year. What we desperately need is more low-cost spay and neuter for the free-roaming cats and low-income owners. It is time for the jurisdictions to step up and make this resource more available. All the local jurisdictions have mandatory spay and neuter. This does no good if people can't afford to get it done. We desperately need another 10,000 surgeries a year. The cost for this would be about $1 million. Investing in this would save more than that in reduced need for shelter services, animal control, and rescue. It is time to invest in the solution rather than continuing to clean up the mess. I was wondering if we could borrow against that sewer fund for this, since you can borrow it for other things. We really need, and again, I'm deeply concerned with contract negotiations, that the Animal Foundation wants another $5 million, when just a little over a year ago, they were already granted another $5 million. So please, if you're, please put any money, if you can borrow money, put it towards prevention. We are killing thousands of animals again at our High Kill Local Shelter. And another post talked about 300,000 or 400,000 kittens will be born in the next coming months, and only half of them will survive.
Thank you so much.
So please, please, prevention is the key. Thank you.
Is there anybody else wishing to speak during public comment? In that case, we'll go to Agenda Item 38, Council Emerging Issues. This is a discussion regarding potential items for future city council agendas, encompasses all wards. Any discussion must be limited to whether or not such proposed item shall be placed on a future agenda. No discussion regarding the substance of any such proposed topic shall occur. No action shall be taken. Do any members of the council have any topics that they would like to bring forward under this item? Okay, seeing none, I thank you all very much, and we will now go to Agenda Item 39. Council Members' Recognition. Comments made by individual city council members during this portion of the agenda will not be acted upon by the city council unless that subject is on the agenda and scheduled for action. Ms. Armstrong?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. It's wonderful to be here today. Just want to recap a few things that happened in Ward Five over the last month. We successfully hosted the principals' public and charter schools in Ward Five at the Historic West Side School. We had a lovely turnout. We had some really candid discussion, and it was just wonderful to have our education leaders participate, and I'm looking forward to the next event. We also were excited to host Love on Jackson Block Party on Saturday, February the 22nd, on Jackson Avenue between D and F Streets. This event was also hosted by the City of Las Vegas in collaboration with our office. This event celebrated the vibrant history of Jackson Avenue. There were activities for the kids. We had live entertainment. I may have sang a few verses of something. We had businesses there, community organizations, some job training organizations were there, and employment. We probably had 250 people in the first 15 minutes. It was amazing, and I'm really excited that people came out, and we are really looking forward to the next one. Thank you, Mayor, for being there, for opening up with some kind words, and it was wonderful. And thank you for all the council members who were able to roll through. Thank you so much. The next thing that happened was my staff, Nora Lardes, attended the International Mother Language Day event, which was also on Saturday, the 22nd. This happened at the Sammy Davis Junior Festival Plaza. The event was organized by the Federation. Okay, I'm going to mess this up. Hidalgu...
Hidalguenses.
Say that again, please?
Hidalguenses.
Say the whole thing for me?
Federation de Hidalguenses.
Thank you so much, Councilwoman Diaz. I speak a little German. My Spanish is very suspect, but it was a celebration of mother languages, and Nora Lardes went and made some wonderful connections with some community leaders. I've said this before, and I'll say it again, it is an honor and a privilege for folk... It is an honor and a privilege for folks to have connection with their culture and their language, for African-American people who don't know clearly where our genes and our genealogy is. To have folks who have it is wonderful, and I'm so glad we were able to support, and we will be doing more of this in the future. We also had, on, the Saturday, the 22nd was busy, the Oboto Grocer Store grand opening, and this was amazing. This organization with Tamika Henry at the lead had a beautiful event. It was really symbiotic with Jackson Avenue. Our community went from the Oboto Grocer and came over to Jackson Avenue and vice versa. And it was fabulous, and we're hoping that we can coordinate this again in a similar manner next year with the Green Grocer Fresh Food. I saw a post online that even Trina at Grits Cafe is shopping at the Green Grocer to get some of their staples. So things are happening, and I'm just excited of what's going on in Ward 5, and particularly in Historic West Las Vegas. Finally, today, March 5th, from 2:00 to 6:00 p.m. at Doolittle Community Center, is Dental Eye and Clinic, the Sweet Tooth Event. So folks, if you're watching, if you are in need of eye examinations or dentistry, please go over to Doolittle and participate. This is a real issue for senior citizens who don't always have this as part of their health insurance, and for our small children, we want them not to have caps. We want them to have beautiful, shiny, well-kept teeth. So folks, please take advantage. And as always, our office is available to assist where we can in the community in Ward 5. Our phone number is 702-229-5443, or you can email us at ward5@lasveganevada.gov. Thank you.
Thank you. That was very uplifting. Councilwoman Summers Armstrong, thank you. And Councilwoman Polensky.
Oh, thank you, Madam Mayor. On February 20th, we attended a ribbon cutting for the Collaboration Cafe at the Collaboration Center. The Collaboration Center is a tremendous asset for individuals with diverse abilities in our community. I'm looking forward to future events to partner together in the community. I attended Las Vegas Metropolitan Police Department's State of the Department address on February 25th with many of my colleagues, where Sheriff McMahill delivered an incredibly uplifting speech and updated highlighting the reductions in homicides, robberies, burglaries, and almost field thefts here in Southern Nevada. I'm looking forward to seeing the technology and equipment enhancements that the department has planned for us in the future. It was great. Next up, yesterday, I had such a wonderful time celebrating Nevada Reading Week by reading to three different grade levels at a Ward 4 school. A big shout-out to Eisenberg Elementary School Librarian Cheryl Fenwald and the school administration for their warm welcome, and to the kids for being great listeners and participants. Are you looking for a way to positively impact our community? Join others and volunteer at Molaski Junior High School located at 7801 West Gilmore Avenue for a campus cleanup project this coming Saturday, the 8th, from 9:00 to 11:00. Tools and snacks will be provided. Do you know an amazing teacher that deserves recognition? We will be selecting one elementary, one middle, and one high school teacher to award. It's a great opportunity to let our kids' teachers know how grateful we are for their hard work. The deadline for submission is March 20th, coming up soon. If you need some more information, please feel free to call my office. And next up, are you experiencing higher-than-usual water bills? The City of Las Vegas and participation with the Las Vegas Valley Water District is offering eligible homeowners for up to 7,500 in assistance through the drip program. Are you a resident 60 years or older and need help with your utility or sewer bills? Now through March 14th, eligible individuals can apply for the utility tax and sewer rebate program at one of the six Valley locations on the slide. And lastly for this slide, parents, do you have school-aged children who need safe-and-fun options when school is out? Check out the No School Fund Days offered by multiple locations within the City of Las Vegas. And next, do you have any information regarding any of the 16 missing childrens featured on this slide? If so, please call Las Vegas Metropolitan Police Department Missing Person Detail. Let's get them reunited with their families. As usual, at-risk youth or runaways, please call the National Runaway Safely Hotline. There's always a bus ticket home available to you. And lastly, please stay connected with me. Our social media platforms, or call us the old-fashioned way at 702-229-2524. We're always here to provide any assistance that we can. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Councilwoman Polensky. Mayor Potem?
Thank you very much, Mayor. I will have a busy weekend. We have a couple of events. We have a shredding and medication disposal event happening at the Mirabelli Community Center from 10:00 a.m. to 12:00 p.m. That's this Saturday. And we also have a tree planting and Bonanza Trail cleanup in partnership with Get Outdoors Nevada, and this will be from 9:00 to 11:00. Feel free to come out and join us. It's a lot of fun, and thanks very much, Mayor.
Thank you very much. Councilwoman Diaz.
MPT, what happened with what we celebrate today? You're not sharing that information anymore, what we celebrate today is known for?
That's Alex's job. I had nothing to do with that. It's just Alex. If you want to bring it back, you have to talk to Alex.
All right, okay. Fair enough. All right. On February 19th, we had the pleasure of being at the Mexican Consulate, Mexico's Mexican Consulate's community space, transitioning the exhibition from our historic Fifth Street School into the Mexican Consulate, and also bidding farewell to an amazing consul that we had the privilege of working for the last three to four years. Lourdes Orestano Robledo has moved on from Las Vegas, and she's a huge loss. She was always heeding the call to help the community, so we wish her well in Houston. On February 19th, I also made a quick drop-in to the Spanish Business Incubator graduation that was held here at our Now Cafe. Over 60 community members completed the six-week Spanish Business Incubator program, and everyone said they would highly recommend it to their friends and colleagues looking to improve their business practices. So I just want to congratulate everyone here at the City of Las Vegas, Minerva Gomez, and all of the instructors for empowering our community members to be their own entrepreneurs. On February 28th, we dropped by to thank the Leroy Niemann Foundation for generously contributing and making possible the renovation of the Art Room for the Downtown Boys and Girls Club located on Stewart and 28th in Ward 3. And we're just so excited that they have this Art Room to inspire them to create their own masterpieces in the years to come. On March 1st, I and Ido had the pleasure of planting trees with our community. There were a lot of UNLV students and other community members. We also had our carpenters' union present, helping us. We got 15 trees parked adjacent, the trails and the playground equipment that's newly installed there. And so I just want to thank Get Outdoors Nevada for always making things run so smoothly, and our own tree forester for the City of Vegas for definitely teaching us how to plant these new babies in there. And 20 pounds of trash were also collected at the same time. On March 4th, this is Reading Week, and can't but pop in into our different schools across the ward, and I had the pleasure of reading yesterday to students of my alma mater, Sunrise Acres Elementary School. And it was an awesome experience to read to Ms. Alalud's second-grade students and Ms. Abdur Rashid's third-grade class. They were very attentive, and I love that they definitely had their thinking caps on every step of the way. For events coming up this Saturday, March 8th, it is International Women's Day, and there will be a Health and Education Resource Expo in partnership with La Campesina to celebrate this special International Women's Day. There will be free health and wellness things that are going to be imparted at our East Las Vegas Community Center from 11:00 a.m. to 3:00 p.m. I hope those that are available can come and partake in the festivities. Also want to put on folks' radars that the muralist who created Our Collective Strength Has No Boundaries will be in town next week, and we are offering this community workshop and artist talk out of East Las Vegas Community Center. You do have to pre-register to attend, so please take a quick picture, go to that QR link, and register to meet Adri del Rocío. Every time I drive by that mural, it's so inspirational, and so many people love it. So I'm glad she's going to come back. On Wednesday, March 12th, we will have a community meeting regarding the Stewart Avenue Complete Streets. Stewart Avenue is transforming, and we want you to share your thoughts on the safety and design of this monumental change happening on Stewart Avenues between 6th and Nellis. So please attend this neighborhood meeting on the 12th at 5:30 p.m. at East Las Vegas Community Center to give us more input about where safety improvements are needed, pedestrian crossings, bike lanes, and how we are making this a more safe pedestrian and bike-friendly corridor, and also motorist-friendly. So please come and impart your knowledge so we can make the best project moving forward. I'm going to skip the next slide because Councilwoman Polensky already hit upon the end of the rebates for utilities coming to a close here. But the next one is about tax season already being here, so make sure you see these free tax preparation assistance programs, and if you make less than $67,000 a year, you will qualify to receive that assistance. And with that, thank you so much for tuning in. Appreciate all of the council's hard work in their wards, and to the women, the fabulous women on this council, Happy International Women's Day.
Thank you, Councilwoman Diaz. Councilwoman Seaman.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. It was an absolute honor to present a proclamation to the incredibly talented Claude Barak for the opening of his new salon. His impact goes beyond hairstyle, it's artistry passion, and a commitment to greatness, as well as creating jobs. We had another successful Breakfast Buzz in Ward 2 Biz. It was great to have Commissioner of District C, April Becker, who's district overlaps Ward 2, there to speak, and Metro, and of course, our city marshals. These relationships benefit the constituents of our great city. Our ninth anti-human trafficking event was very successful at Southern Hills Baptist Church. Knowing that we are second in cities in the nation for human trafficking, it is important that we continue the mission to help educate parents on the dangers of grooming their children and let people know that our children in Las Vegas are not for sale. I joined my friend Virid at the Ninth Annual U.S. Catchball Association Tournament. They chose to have it in Las Vegas. It is the fastest-growing women's sport. We had people from Israel, we had Romania, all over the country to join catchball that embodies the spirit of teamwork, inclusivity, and enthusiasm, inspiring and encouraging women to join the game and be a part of this incredible community. I had the pleasure of joining my dear friends Daphne Barak and Arabella Ghanasty at the Second Annual Starry-Sky Night Gala in Palm Desert, and we presented Cure for the Kids Foundation Las Vegas, a proclamation for all the work they do on, well, for the Changer Event Series Day, LLC Day, for all the work that they're doing to bring awareness to cancer. And we were grateful to have Secretary Robert Kennedy Jr. there, and the night shined even brighter by the wonderful performance by Christopher Macio, all for cancer research. And we have our next Breakfast Buzz in Ward 2 Biz Saturday, March 22nd, from 9:00 to 10:00 at Veterans Memorial Center. Please come, break bread with us, and talk about all the issues in Ward 2. Everyone is welcome. It's a free breakfast, but we encourage you to RSVP so we have enough breakfast for everyone. And now we're calling all artists to Art in the Park. That will be April 5th. You can still sign up to get a booth to present your art, so please try to reserve today with the QR code. Our Art in the Park is welcomed, we welcome everyone, even their little furry friends, to come and enjoy a day of looking at local artists' work and even having the opportunity to purchase it. Now on to our adopt a pet. We have Ahsoka, I hope that's how we pronounce it. They have the most interesting names, these animals. It's a Mastiff Neapolitan female, 123 pounds, good-security dog, age one year and six months, available for adoption at the Nevada SPA. And we also have Sophie, a domestic short-haired female, 12.6 pounds, 12 years old and six months. If you're looking to get an animal, please adopt either from the Animal Foundation, the Nevada SPCA, all the rescues out there. These animals are all looking for forever homes. If you want to get your word out about your business, you just need to contact our office to join our Small Business Saturdays, where we feature a different business every week on our social media channels. You can contact my office or email us at ward2@lasveganevada.gov. And if you have any issues in Ward 2, we are happy to help you. You can just contact my staff, 702-229-2420. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you very much, Councilwoman Seaman. Councilwoman Bruni.
Thank you, Mayor. Good morning, everyone. I'm going to start by recapping some of our recent events and outings. Last month, we kicked off our quarterly Big Book Club series in Ward 6 in partnership with the Centennial Hills Library. Thank you to all of the neighbors who came out to discuss our first book, Storming Caesar's Palace, where we learned more about our important history and the work of Ruby Duncan. It was also great to meet new neighbors. We were pleased to chat with the Las Vegas Paiute Chairperson, Benny So, on our most recent Access City Council episode, which airs tomorrow, so don't miss it. We chatted about Chairman So's economic development vision, ongoing collaboration between the city and the Las Vegas Paiutes, and his goals as chairman. I was pleased to have had the chance to visit Protective Force International Headquarters in downtown Vegas and see firsthand how they're keeping our community safe. From their patrol division and surveillance operations, their commitment to public safety makes a huge difference for our neighbors. We had a very busy and successful shredding event last weekend. Without a doubt, we are definitely in the middle of tax season because we ran out of bins in the first 20 minutes of the event, so we had to improvise on the fly. Thanks to our special events team for being adaptive and hustling to keep the lines moving. I'm going to do a little PSA for those of you who may want to go to Councilman Knutson's shredding event. Please, when you bring your papers, make sure you bring them in bags, plastic bags or paper bags that you want to dispose of. Our line got backed up because everybody this time wanted to keep the boxes and plastic bins that they brought their papers, and it really slowed the line, so please bring them in disposable bags. Thank you to CSN for having me participate in a panel, Resilient and Rising: Women Shaping Las Vegas. It was a great conversation, and the students were inspiring. We have several events this month that you won't want to miss. Next Thursday, we'll be hosting our monthly Boca Diethos with Bruni, Thursday, March 13th, from 9:00 to 11:00 at our Centennial Hills Satellite Office. Our next Community Connections event is March 26th from 68 at the Centennial Hills Active Adult Center. For this meeting, we're discussing HOAs and governance. We are thrilled that we will be joined by the HOA state ombudsman, our city attorney, and Eric McCoy, our code enforcement director, and several neighbors who serve on their own HOA boards. This will be a great opportunity to talk to the state ombudsman directly, bring your questions, and join us. As always, we want to hear from you. Please reach out to us at 702-229-5463, or email us at nbrune@lasveganevada.gov. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Councilwoman Bruni. I want to thank the members of the city council and thank all of those that are watching this morning. We appreciate your involvement in our community. And with that, the city council meeting is now adjourned.